Commissioner Rombach emailed, it'll be about five minutes late.
Okay.
I left you a couple resolutions to sign. One looks familiar, I owned a typo, I fixed it.
Okay.
Other than that.
Okay, I guess we will call the March 10th, 2025 meeting on the Middletownship Planning Commission to order at 6:31. First on the agenda is a roll call. Commissioner Brooks.
President.
Commissioner Curtis.
President.
Commissioner Snyder.
President.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
And Chair Schurge is here. I understand Commissioner Rombach will be a few minutes late, so we'll mark him here when he's here. On to public remarks. This is public remarks on items that are on the agenda, not necessarily those that are in the public hearing. So if you're here to speak on a public hearing, we'll do that later. Is there anyone who'd like to give public remarks? Move on to approval of the agenda. We'll entertain a moment of the agenda.
So move.
Thank you, Commissioner Curtis. Second by Commissioner Snyder. Any questions, amendments to the agenda? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Okay. Now approval of the minutes of the February 25th Planning Commission meeting.
So move.
Commissioner Curtis.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Snyder, thank you. Any questions, comments, amendments? Okay, all in favor of approval of the minutes as presented? Can you say aye?
Aye.
You opposed? Okay, minutes are approved, thank you. Communications?
We have none.
Excellent, thank you. So we are on item seven, public hearing. This is special use permit number 25003, Oakmoss Land Investments. And Mr. Shorty, you want to start out with what a public hearing is, or?
I, I will. We don't have-
You can do a brief.
We don't have members of the general public, but as I explained to a couple of you, this is the public hearing for the rehearing of the marijuana application, retail application at 4360 South Hagedorn Road. It's a rehearing because, and I'll explain that, but anyway, just the, this public, the planning, here's the gist of it. The Planning Commission is not allowed to make a decision tonight. They have to come back at a future meeting, that's in their bylaws. So the public hearing is tonight. This is the opportunity for anybody in the public who wishes to speak. This was legally noticed. Notices went out to everybody within 300 feet of the property as per Michigan planning law. The Planning Commission will probably likely do what they like to call a straw poll. This is a non-binding vote that they do at the end of the night to give staff an idea which resolution to write, because we have to bring that back at a future meeting. Likely, this will be on the March 24th agenda. At that point, the Planning Commission will have a formal vote. That will be a recommendation. This application will then go to the board for consideration. Okay? I need to write that down.
Commissioner Rombach is here now, this is for the record.
6:34. Okay, sorry about that. I just wanted to make sure I had the minutes.
Thank you.
So like I said, this is special use permit. We did give it a new number, 25003, Oakmoss Local Investments to construct an adult-use marijuana provisioning center at 4360 South Hagedorn Road. This is very similar to an application that you heard last year, number 24020, same location. The difference is that instead of using the existing 2,587 square foot building, the applicant is now proposing to tear that down and construct a 2,030 square foot building in its place. Either way, this application does follow the Board of Trustees' approval of the adult-use marijuana conditional license on May 9th, 2024. The property, I will bring it up here, is on Google Maps. It's in right there. This is Michigan State Fields. This is the MSU Medical Building where, as an aside, my orthopedist that fixed my wrist resides.
Hey, can you drop the guy onto the road there?
To what, I'm sorry?
The street, the street view guy?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Does that help?
No, no, the little guy down in the corner, right corner. If you can drop him in front of the property, you'll get street view. There you go.
Yeah. So you can see, I've got the right property, right? I'm looking at the right, okay, thank you. Just wanted, you can see the building that's gonna come down and be reconstructed. The site, a proposed site plan is in your packet, as all SUPs, that will be, if approved, it will be followed by formal site plan review. Is that good? Okay.
Thank you.
It does meet the zoning and future land use. There's no issue, zoning issues. It's zoned research park. It's shown business technology in the future land use map. This is within, one, this is within overlay area number four on our adult-use marijuana map in the township. It is consistent with intent and purposes of the SUP chapter, the marijuana regulations. It is consistent with our applicable land use policies. It is adequately served by services on-site, sewer, water, that kind of thing. On page three of my memo, I will note, the traffic assessment is attachment number eight, not attachment number six. The traffic assessment is the big reason why this has taken so long at the public hearing for their original application. You guys seem to indicate approval, but you wanted an up-to-date traffic assessment that has been provided, and it is in your packet. And there's no findings that it needs to proceed to a traffic study or anything like that. As in all traffic assessments, when this goes to site plan approval, that assessment will be reviewed by the Hingham County Road Department, and they'll have to sign off on that as well. Really, I can answer any questions you have. We do not have any major concerns from this application. As I said, very similar to what you guys heard last year. The applicant is well represented, and we're here for questions.
Go ahead, Commissioner McCurtis.
Thank you. When I was, when I drove by this weekend, and so I'm glad that you dropped a little guy there, because I wanted to make sure that was the property that I was looking at, because it looked like it was a residential, because it's, it's a house. Is that the-
Yes, it had, it had been, yes.
Okay, so it's not residential anymore, obviously?
It is not being used, right? It is vacant property.
And, and so it's zoned properly, I presume, too, for this use. My question is, when I look at the design, it looks as if it's going to have, still take a character of a house. Is there a reason why that is? Just, just curious.
Give me a minute, I'll bring the site plan up.
It looks like it's a house.
I asked that same question the first time.
Yes, I wasn't on the-
There, there is a current, I think there is a current, like a current, a current, and a proposed, like, okay, that is the current situation, if you're looking at the first page. I'm trying to back out, I apologize. There's the drawings of the buildings that are in there, but-
Yeah, I'm on page thirty of 66, if that makes sense, if that helps.
Right there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in this section right here. And if you go up, you'll see, if you keep going up, I think, yes, right, right there.
That's the final vision.
That's the front, and that's, that's what I'm looking at.
Of the proposed building. Yes, of the proposed building. If you want further clarification on what they're proposing to build, the engineer is here. I can turn it over, but yeah.
It's a very general question as to why the look of a house.
Do we wait and do questions for staff first?
I will say that we don't have any aesthetic, we don't have any aesthetic ordinance. If they want to make it look like a house, they can certainly do that. If you want to ask them specifically after, you know, when they get a chance to come up and talk, that's fine, too. But-
That's it, okay.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Just a quick question about when, when we have these projects that are, that we're looking at and evaluating, and then, once they're approved, once they go through your site plan approval and all that, like, when does the zoning change actually take place? Is that part of the process?
There, there is no zone change on this.
There doesn't have to be. It's already zoned.
This is zoned research park.
Okay. I just saw the reference to the, I thought I saw the reference to the future land use map or to the master plan documents. So my brain read that as, in the future, it was to be zoned as that. I didn't realize it already was.
Yeah. The house that is there, if it were occupied, would be a legal one conforming. Now that it's unoccupied, it's not going back.
Interesting, okay.
Other questions for staff? Go ahead.
I don't know if you can answer this one, but let's say if, well, how long of a timeframe is it to tear down and rebuild? Like, how long? I don't know if that was-
It will depend on how long it takes to get through site plan review. Site plan review is, has no public hearing attached to it. It's an administrative process. However, it does involve approvals from the Hingham County Road Department and the Hingham County's Drain Commissioner's Office. There's a, there's evidence that there's probably wetland behind the property, maybe wetland on the property. I don't think that's a thing, because this went through a, this went through a, a public hearing for the medical side before I started here. And there's no wetland assessment on this, but the Drain Commissioner's Office will be involved in that. So however long it takes to get through site plan will be how long it takes for them to be able to get their building permits.
Yeah, and I'm just, let's assume all those things go through. I'm just saying, for a project like this, tear down or demolition, rebuild or build again, does that take a year, two years? Assuming that all those things go, you know, we don't know. But I'm just saying, for a project like this.
They can, they can speak more to this, but just thinking about the process, the board won't get this application before April. They meet three times. You're talking late April, early May, probably early May, before SUP's approved, if it gets approved. They can submit for site plan immediately after. There's no ticking clock on a site plan approval. We owe them comments in 30 days, but that doesn't mean it's gonna get approved in 30 days.
What I'm, what I'm getting at is, and I, I totally understand what you're saying, or, you know, could you drill down a little bit more to specifics?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. What I'm, what I'm trying to figure out is, assuming all of those things happen, right?
Mm-hmm.
From a general standpoint, once all that stuff happens, how long for demolition, how long to rebuild? The reason I'm asking is because I know we had a project at one point near North Wind or something. It took a long time-
Yeah.
-for developers. Once they got everything approved and all that stuff, it took a long time for them to do it. We didn't, we didn't hold anyone, or we couldn't hold them accountable for, you know, completing the, the project. And so I'm just wondering, if you're something like this, typically, how long will it take, you know, assuming that everything passes and all that?
From a construction standpoint, I'll let the applicant talk to that. I would assume you would probably start to see dirt being pushed around before the end of the year? Does that help? I, I think you-
I guess I'm, I'm just looking for like, yeah, something like this, it takes about one year, two years.
Yeah, oh, this would not be a two-year, this would not be a two-year process. This would not be a two-year process. Depending, late, late fall, spring next year. Yeah, I will, I'll, yeah, I'll defer construction. I can talk to you about the time it's gonna take to get through the process. They're probably getting through site plan sometime in the summer. From that point, they can get their demo permits and move forward. Demo was easier than, than we saw this at the, at the Starbucks site on Grand River, right? Demo's easier than construction, but I think they can be pushing dirt around before, before the end of the year.
No problem. Thank you.
Can I ask?
Go ahead.
I have two questions, Mr. Shorty, before you hand it over, please, short. One is, so just to confirm my understanding and the commission's understanding, so we are, we are making a recommendation here to the Township Board, and the board would make a final decision on whatever we do.
This is correct.
And then, related to that, was, so the parking, or the, the traffic study, was that the only reason that we provided for delaying a decision on this?
Yes. You wanted to see an up-to-date traffic study. We had to give a little history. There had been another marijuana application, marijuana retail application that had gone through, that did not have an up-to-date traffic study, and that held that process up. So, at the board level. So before this one went through, recognizing that had just happened, you asked for an up-to-date traffic study, which has been provided.
Okay. I have one question on the, the frontage. So it, it says, the RP district requires a minimum of 200 feet of lot frontage and-
For new lots.
Two hun, and two acres for new lots.
That is correct.
This is not considered a new lot.
This is not a new lot.
Okay.
If this were not a lot, an existing lot, we would not allow this to be built. We would not allow this lot to be split. But it does exist, so it is what it is.
Hmm. That's what I wondered, because I, I'm looking at this lot again and just thinking about how large the other lots are around it. It just seems a odd, but that's not the decision.
As long as they meet these setbacks and the land use requirements, they, you know, it is a buildable lot.
Okay, so-
It's just not, it's just a size non-conforming lot.
Based on that, is it, would this require any variances? And I get that you haven't, I don't think you've seen the full site plan yet, right? So-
We're not anticipating that based on what they sent us. We, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold a final determination on that until we see site plan, because who knows, you know, what site issues could come up when they start actually doing full engineering? But unless they're, you know, violating site back, and I don't, I don't know setback stuff right now in, in the RP zone, so don't clue me on that. But, you know, unless they need those variances, if they can fit in the building envelope, this will not require a variance, no.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I know that this is a somewhat speculative question, so thank you.
No, it's, it's cool.
Entertaining. All right, thanks.
Just to clarify, you said that the newly proposed building is slightly smaller than the existing building that's on the lot now?
That, yeah, a little over 500 square feet smaller.
Okay. An, an SUP is required anytime a medical, not a medical marijuana, but a marijuana facility, there's, it always needs an SUP. There's never an instance, so even if it fits all the setbacks and fits everything else and the zoning, an SUP is required.
Right, right.
Any other questions for staff? We can always bring Mr. Shorty back if we need to.
One very technical one, and I'm sorry to put this to you without warning. The traffic volumes were assessed at two turning movements, at Hagedorn Road and the University Research Containment Facility access, which is not an address I recognize. Can you, or does the applicant have someone who can help us understand where those two, that second intersection is?
Well, maybe, but in the, well, let's-
I didn't see a map, but I might have. I saw the schematic, but not an actual. It sounds like a dated entry. And presumably to the south of the subject site, since Hagedorn.
So here's your University Research Containment Facility right here. I'll close that. That's the drive that you're talking about.
Okay. So that's where all the traffic numbers come from, is the movements in and out of that, that drive, as a, what might happen across the road?
Yeah, there really isn't, until you get up here to the Sparrow Building, you don't really, you don't have anything else. This is, I think there's a building here, maybe there's a driveway here, but there's nothing, you can see, until you get to these lots to the south, that's, that's it.
Yeah, it-
I'm gonna shut that off, because that's a moving.
I'm sorry I haven't been able to study it in more, in more detail, but some of the graphs I'm looking at in the traffic assessment seem to describe like 20, 19 vehicles in a count period. It seems, anyway.
Seems what?
A lot less than you would expect from a retail establishment that was doing well.
A re, what?
I'm saying that that, those turning movements as a measure of what might happen at a retail establishment across the road, I think are worth understanding, that it's not, they're not gonna make money at 19 cars a day.
Is that a peak hour number?
I'm sorry, I have not studied it more. I hope applicants can enlighten us.
Okay, okay. Because if, that's a peak hour, that makes more sense.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff, or would you like to close public hearing and the applicant?
I'm good with closing.
Okay. I think that's what we do next, right? Well, we don't have anybody here to speak in public.
Yeah, yeah, note that you don't, yeah, formally open and close, and then, or, no, you would bring the applicant up, formally open, formally close.
Okay. All right. Let's bring the applicant up. We can always, if, if anything the applicant shares with us generates more questions for Mr. Shorty, we'll do that. And if you could just give us your name and your address as you share information, and we'll just have people ask you questions, unless there's something you'd like to share first.
I, I don't think, my name is Anderson Grenset, by the way. I'm an attorney representing the applicant. I myself am not going to have much to say to you, because I think that staff did an excellent job of explaining the situation. And the crux of it is, is that we previously were going to remodel an existing building. We're now asking to construct a new building. As mentioned before, it's going to be slightly smaller. We have the project manager, Zach, who will be actually taking out, and we also have the site engineer, John Guma, who I believe is gonna be best situated to answer any of your technical questions about the project, which I know there were a few, so I'm going to turn over the floor to him at this point.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Guma. We provided these drawings for you to review tonight. So a couple of answers to your questions. Construction time, the day our permits are issued, we should be completed with this project approximately six months, the date permits are, permits are issued, from start to finish. The look of the project is not intended to look like a residential, but this is a multiple, this is their third site, and this is what their sites look like. It is homey. It's called Good Vibes. So it's supposed to give you that comfortable look, not the commercial aspect of it as you're walking into a typical dispensary. We are not seeking any variances. We are, everything is per the ordinance. We're just looking to seek, move on to the next step and get our project going.
Okay, did that answer your question? You have anything more?
No, that answers both of my questions. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Go ahead, Commissioner Rombach.
I guess what was discovered between what I'll call our first pass and now, where the building went from rehab to rebuild.
Sure. So the, the building is 100 years old? It's very old. So in order to touch it, we would have to like, pretty much touch everything. At that point, you're just burning money. And it's faster and easier, more energy compliant to build a new one, rather than put Band-Aids on something that really needs stitches, in a sense.
Okay. Yeah, because I, I zeroed in on that, I think I recall last time, just on like, why, why use something, why use a building that's already there?
Yeah, it's beyond. It's been sitting for a while.
Oh, it's been vacant for, okay. That's, that's a good enough reason.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is the point where we would normally either discuss amongst ourselves or take a straw poll to indicate for Mr. Shorty whether we intend to approve recommending, recommend approval of this to the Township Board, or will we have more questions we have?
I have a question. Commissioner McConnell, what, did this, you began a statement-
Sorry.
-earlier, and then dropped it, so I'm-
Yeah. Now that I look at the report more closely, it looks like they were basically measuring two turning movements. One out of that driveway, up and the other, right, right turns and left turns. And there were about 20 or 30 of each of those. And that seems to me like a pretty poor surrogate for what you expect from a retail establishment that's got people coming and going. So I was kinda hoping to hear more about how that traffic study was done, or traffic assessment was done, and how we can interpret its results in terms of this application. Since we made a special request, I think it kind of behooves us to understand the evidence that they've brought us in response to our request.
Do we want to bring the applicant back up to talk more about that?
I would love to hear from anybody about that, yeah.
I have one follow-up question to that. What, based, what would, just to guesstimate, what would you expect would be a reasonable number in this case?
I don't think there are any reasonable ones.
Okay.
I think this is about, probably the best we can do.
Oh, okay.
Right? It, it don't have a, a perfect example of that to understand how it's gonna work.
Right.
It, it is also worth noting, remembering, the road, road department's gonna look at the same study eventually, and if they don't accept the number, that, they can kick that back at that point. That is a potential curveball that they know could, could happen. But if you don't mind, I'd like to bring that page up, so we can see what we're talking about?
Sure.
Okay.
Mr. Shorty, have you ever seen that happen, where the road department kicks something back because the-
They made the recommendation about that taper lane at Panda Express.
That's true. The longer I'm here, the more I see, I suppose.
Tell me if you, I'm sorry. I hear a, I hear a voice in my head, what?
Do you, do we have some, do you have any further questions?
In the traffic side?
Yes.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna turn it over to our applicant.
I think probably in here, there's a multiplier that goes, okay, that's this land use and that's kind of this much. And for this other land use, there's some other number that they plug in. And I'm just hoping for-
So I can speak, maybe a little, give you a little bit of clarification on it. My name's Zach Lask. I'm the project manager, or will be the project manager for this.
L.A.S.K.?
L.A.S.K.
Is this the correct page that we're looking at?
Are you looking at?
Oh, I'm sorry, let me-
I'm on 39 of 66.
So if going to page two of 18 on our traffic set, oh, that- So if going to page two of eighteen on our traffic set, oh, that would be.
Yes, up above that.
Leave the page right above that.
It's got a picture. It's got an aerial photograph, right?
That's the aerial. That's, I think it's that chart above. Basically, they.
I'm hearing up, I'm getting down. I'm taking votes? Okay.
Yes, that's it.
That's what you're looking for?
Yes.
Okay.
There we go. Thank you.
So that's basically just showing, that was just, the, the engineer went out there and did the study and it basically was just the best way that they could forecast their current traffic within that hour, and so that was their findings. Truth be told is that, you know, when we're up and running, we're, there's only so much traffic that can be into this facility to begin with. There's only about a thousand square feet of actual retail space in the building. I mean, so we, we really don't see these numbers being too, you know, irregular from what's be expected from the development.
So table one is that Institute of Transportation Engineers Land Use Manual.
That's correct.
And for marijuana dispensary, they expect five hundred and forty-seven movements per day.
That's correct.
And my point is that the, how we understand that is kind of based on a very much smaller number.
And that's, and that's including in and out as well.
Right, yeah, thank you.
Anything else for? Yeah, so, you know, it's looking, I mean, if you divide that in half, it's about three hundred people a day is what we're looking at. Three hundred.
And the through traffic on Hagadorn during those peaks?
Correct. Those, that I believe is, that, the, is that that second chart I believe on that page? Or is that somewhere else?
You're looking for a traffic, the traffic count? Oh, okay.
What? Yeah.
Why did it get pulled out?
The through movements on the next chart's down.
Okay, there is that.
So twenty-seven fifty-two going up and twenty-three fifty-two coming down. There's like five.
Wait, is that, is that what that's saying though? Is it, isn't this saying? What's the, twenty-three sixty-eight is in, so that's not into the building. That's just, it's like going north or south?
It's just southbound on.
Or southbound, oh, I see.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the northbound is twenty-seven fifty-two, the opposite commute flux. Right? Am I understanding that?
Yes, that's correct. I mean, you're talking about a small fraction of, of the people that are, would be turning into our facility based on what your average traffic.
Well, you hope additional people will come by too, right?
That would be fantastic, but, you know, just for the purposes of the traffic study, that's kind of the findings.
Yeah. I mean, that, that stretch of road is also bounded by two traffic signals, so it does get breaks in traffic, I guess.
I just have to say that the colors are really confusing on this. I mean, I look at data all day long and the, the traffic reports are always just.
There will be other opportunities in site plan review to address any concerns about there being any sorts of backup for.
Oh, yeah, like I said, the road department will look at the same, same assessment. If they don't, if they have issues, they will bring them forward. We will not approve the site plan until they're happy.
Thank you. And thanks for the explanation.
Yeah, no worries. Thank you.
But, you good?
Yeah, good as I am.
Thank you.
Frank.
Any other thoughts, questions, discussion?
Just a general thought, because I don't think I could help myself at this point. It's like, you think about five dispensaries in this area more or less coming out, and then everything I'm reading about the industry seems to be trending that it's due to constrict more than grow. So it's like, I just, you know, I'm sort of thinking about this many people in, this many people out in a day. Is that a profitable long-term business for you guys that you honestly believe that by getting this many people in in a given day, it will be viable after investing in all this? Because it, it, to some extent, you're going to build a new building, you're going to tear this old house and you're doing all this stuff, and then like in a business that seems to be having a hard time growing. Although hard time growing is a, was an unintended pun there, but, no pun intended today, but. So maybe just a comment. It's just, I, I don't have any concerns about the planning in and of itself. I have more concerns about the general economic viability of this as a, as a business, as a large-scale business.
Do you want that to, okay.
So I think that you're, you're not necessarily incorrect about there being a general constric, uh, constriction in terms of the market. However, there's also a contemporaneous rebalancing of where people are going to shop. And it's our understanding after doing some research into this that a lot of people and potential customers are currently going to East Lansing or to other further areas away to go to shop at a dispensary. And that there is going to be a potential influx of demand and customers once we relocate it here. And because it will be closer and it will also be more homey, and we do also expect that advertising and things like that would also boost these numbers.
So the, the argument is location, location, location?
I think that's always the argument and the rejoinder as well.
Yeah, like I said, I have any concerns about the building plan or it's just morbid curiosity about the business.
I do think that we're set on that this location is going to be successful.
This is a great community. Really great. We like you guys a lot.
That was all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? We're good. I'd love to take a straw poll, and I don't think we need to do these by person unless anybody would like to indicate sort of a reason for thinking why you're thinking before we do that.
I intend to vote yes, and one of the reasons I, I guess is I really appreciate how detailed the business plan is, and one of the, one of the categories here is the social equity piece, the prioritization of hiring Meridian Township residents, hiring individuals who have been disproportionately impacted by marijuana prohibition per the State of Michigan definition. I just, I appreciate all the additional details that probably weren't required for this SUP. And, and that being some of it, as well as this board has in the past posed a lot of questions to other applicants, you know, seeking marijuana dispensary SUPs regarding the odor control plans, and theirs are very, very, very detailed. So I just appreciate all of that. So my vote will be a yes.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I, I also liked the plan and I appreciated the section on safety and both for the location and for the employees and I'm sure that's part of business plans, but it's nice to see it articulated like that, so. Any other comments? Okay, so those who are likely to be inclined to support this recommendation can say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I think that's unanimous for you, Mr. Short, and that is not a binding vote on anybody here, you know, that when we actually vote, we may have differing thoughts, but just to give a sense of that. So thank you very much for coming and for sharing information with us. Good. Public hearing, as it were, is now closed at seven oh seven, I guess. And now we are on to unfinished business. Number eight, we have none and other business. The twenty-twenty-five Brownfield redevelopment authority appointment as the designee from the Planning Commission. Did I hear we may have a taker?
Oh, me? Yeah, I, I'm, I'm able to do the Brownfield redevelopment authority.
Wonderful. Do we need to, oh, go ahead.
Our thanks to.
No, no, no comp. The, the way it is is fine.
We, we really appreciate that. Mr. Short, do we need to vote on this or is?
I need a, yeah, we need to vote.
All right. Would somebody like to then formally make the motion to support Mr.?
I move to punish Commissioner Brooks. Brownfield redevelopment authority. Thank his family for that.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion besides, thank you, thank you, thank you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was expecting to be reprimanded long before this, honestly.
I'd like to thank his family and his employer and. Okay, Commissioner. A battle. All, we're voting.
Yes, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
Yes.
Commissioner Rombach?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so we are unanimous, unanimously supportive of your representation of us on this board.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, um, reports and announcements, Township Board update.
Okay. The last board meeting, consent agenda included, Women's History Month resolution. There's not a lot there. It's mostly bills and stuff. Thinking Planning Commission stuff, they got an annual emergency management plan update. Board discussion items, they discussed ordinance two thousand, twenty-twenty-five dash oh three, which was the Dobie Road rezoning. The board discussion items, they discussed federal state funding requests, and they discussed potential housing tax increment financing. Proposed on the next agenda will be action on the Dobie Road rezoning. That has not been finalized. We got a proposed agenda today, but that, that is probably when it's going to happen. And that looks as far, if you're into such a thing at the moment, on March eighteenth, there will be a presentation from CADA regarding the Ready Ride Program.
Only?
That's, yeah, I, I recognize the names. That's what they were doing at the, yeah, that's, yeah. That, the, the, CADA owes, owes Meridian Township a yearly presentation on how the Ready Ride Program is doing. They used to do that for the Transportation Commission. Now they're doing it for the board.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, um, liaison reports.
The Environmental Commission now has a new staff member in the Department of Public Works. Project engineer by the name of Jack Hughes. We're delighted. He brings a lot of great technical skills to the Environmental Commission. And at our last meeting, we adopted a resolution in support of Meridian Township's fiscal year aggressively directed spending grant application to install solar on another fire station roof.
That's federally funded?
It comes from Congress. This is to Senator Peters.
This is where you can put in like your special request for, it's, it's not pork, but it's, they get to kind of put in a certain number of requests, and so local municipalities can, or local units of government, I think, can put in those kinds of requests.
The Environmental Commission also provided a letter of support for a proposal to the House, to our House Representatives on small-scale anaerobic digestion, like municipal-level anaerobic digestion. So, who knows, maybe we'll get lucky there.
How would that, where does that?
What type of a facility? It sounds fascinating.
He builds portable anaerobic digestion units for various far-flung places. And manages the big facility at MSU, so moving to that mid-scale kind of facility is something that some municipalities are doing. But it's not free.
You'll keep us posted, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. I'll bore you with tales of trash sorts if you let me.
Tell us all about the anaerobics.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Um, project updates, you have anything to share?
I don't have a formal report in there. I do have one thing I will mention. Puff puff tobacco, if you've not noticed, is going into the former hydroponics on Marsh Road. My understanding is that that's going to be open in April. I'm also going to take an opportunity to hand something out to you. This is something that Commissioner McConnell brought to my attention. This is the legal notice that Meridian Township put in Lansing City Pulse. Notice of intent to request release of funds for the CDGB Housing Improvement Local Livability, or otherwise known as the CHIL grant for tiered projects and programs, and I will let you read this. It is two, it is a two-page legal notice. I would also like to notice that, note that that's the first time I've ever seen an acronym with an acronym in it.
You spend more time with the federal government, so. It's basically federal grant money for housing rehabilitation in high-density, low-income areas. They get to do a certain number. They get to request funds to the.
The, the one comment that I will say on this is that we don't have a lot of grants, but we are going after what we can.
Thank you.
On the hydroponics business update, so that was a, was that a former SUP?
Oh, I have no idea.
Pot?
No.
No, no, no. They did, they did plants, plants and stuff.
Grow lights.
See, I didn't, I don't even know.
And that's on Okamis Road, right? Not Marsh Road.
Yeah, yes, it is. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, it used to be a florist years ago.
Yeah, I can see that.
And it's been like in various state of decay, and then they've done a lot of like facade improvements recently.
CDVG is the overall graph.
We didn't have a ZBA meeting, so that would be my. And one day we'll have a Brownfield update.
So project updates, thank you. We don't have anyone here to give public remarks. Any additional commissioner comments?
I have a question, Mr. Short. Maybe this is for you or just general comment for everyone from a, so I feel like we've seen a number of traffic assessments at this point, or at least I have seen a number of them at this point, and do we have any standard or is there any standard on how old the data can be used for these things?
Yes. Yes, it's in our ordinance. I don't want to quote a number without looking it up, but it's far enough long ago, so that tonight's example, tonight was a good example. So these applicants were seen when Meridian Township opted into medical marijuana pre-COVID.
Right.
They did a traffic study for that. That traffic study was submitted as it was for other retail applications that you've seen, and what we found was they got kicked back. So if that gives you an idea of the scale, I could look and see what the ordinance says specifically. I know, you know, so things like traffic assessments, wetland studies, they have, they have expiration dates.
Okay. Well, I'm not concerned with the specific, like how long back it could go. I, my question is more like, so if we heard this again, you know, if we heard this last year and, and I don't, I'm, don't remember having this conversation, but and we were concerned about the history of the traffic study. Was it valid at that point, though, when we reviewed the SUP?
Oh, no. No, they, they, they came, they came forward with an older traffic study.
Oh.
Yeah.
So I guess, why did we review it then if they had an old traffic study that wasn't valid for our purposes?
I think we said bring a new one.
You, you.
It, it came forward. I'd have to go back and look specifically. There, there were, there was a reason.
Okay.
Part of it was they, and they weren't alone in this. Part of it was they simply took their old package, brought it forward, changed medical to retail and went, you know, gave us more money and more, you know, application fee and went forward.
Yeah.
Give us new application fee and went forward. I'd have to look and see if there was a reason specifically.
Okay. All right. I'm just thinking out loud here, just like if, if we encounter this, it's like if.
You won't encounter this again.
Okay.
Staff learned the thing.
Okay, all right. I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to think about like ways to help out as best as possible. I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to think about like ways to help out as best as possible.
Can I suggest one?
Please.
Could there be a whereas clause that mentions the traffic issue? It says this is what was on that initial application and this is what said, and in response to that, the applicant submitted...
Where has the applicant respond? Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
No, wait, it's in the resolution. Clear.
I like that.
Thank you.
I think that helps us all and it helps us, because it is hard, there have been so many things that come before us and then time elapses and it comes back. And I know there were a few where I either missed the meeting where we discussed or I missed the meeting where we voted and so, you know, and then it goes to the board and things happen, you know, like, but it is really helpful to have those placeholders to take us back to where we were. And, and then we have, when we go back and read it later, we, we can remember why we did what we did, so.
Thank you for listening to my question slash comment and thank you for making an actual directional recommendation based on those comments.
Thank you to you both. Any other comments from commissioners? Entertained a motion to adjourn.
Oh, actually, wait, I'm so sorry. Go ahead, comment. The next meeting, I won't be here because it's spring break for my kids and we did decide to go somewhere, so I apologize.
Oh, actually, is the next one?
March twenty-fourth.
I won't be here either. I should say that out loud now, so.
Um, if there's one more of you, this is, okay, if there's one more of you, you got to let me know right away, you have two public hearings in two weeks.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it is what it is, but we'll make it happen, but I need to know, okay?
We can't call in, right?
I'm good.
No.
I would prefer if you did, oh, you can call me, but don't do it the night of the meeting.
No, the open meetings act doesn't...
No, you cannot call in votes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
No. Sorry, I misunderstood.
Yeah.
At this point, I am scheduled to be here, so barring any illness or other unforeseen event, I will be here.
Because remember, your quorum's not based on your current number, it's based on your, you know, whole thing. You've got seven seats.
Yep.
I need four people here.
I think you got four.
You have four right now.
Yeah. See, I was just reviewing that the other day and the way I read it was, it says members in our bylaws.
You still need four.
Sure.
Because half of, you know, that's the majority of six.
Now I get that, yeah.
So just let, let Mr. Shorkey know if anything changes in your plans so that he can make sure the applicants know and we'll...
See, now we're going to test those quorum numbers and the voting numbers that I kept asking about.
And just because you're in Boca Raton doesn't mean you can't watch on YouTube. It's only an hour and a half, right? Come on. Do your...
I will be riding an e-bike through Zion Canyon at that time, so I will not be watching.
I am sorry.
Nice.
Okay.
I move to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Thank you, Mr. Brooks, on favor.
Aye.
We are adjourned at seven twenty-two.